Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. It's a wonderful day to be in Bobcat even though they will have to cancel classes at the high school. But happy to report that all services have been restored and contrary to anything you might have heard anywhere else, we are all set to go for tomorrow. So be sure you're there at the vital times, ice rite table. Alright, so I'm talking to the approval of the work session agenda. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the motion to approve the work session agenda with one minor change. Just to clarify to everybody, add academic achievement as the first line item on the agenda and put GHS under that academic achievement item. Mr. Chairman? Do you have a motion? I make a motion. Second? Second. I'll go with Paul. I'll go with Paul. Okay, it's time we'll have Mr. Steve Fields of Tullamook Community Church do our handoff.
I'm thankful to be part of a community where we still pray, still honor God. The other evening at the wrestling tournament, a boy passed out and quit breathing. And the young people got together, melted down and prayed, and the whole place was quiet. They prayed and boy's eyes opened and prayed and took him to the emergency room. And I'm just proud to be part of a community where we still pray together. God our Father, thank you so much for this great country. And we thank you for the freedom that we had to travel all across this nation. The great opportunities we have and the blessings that you've placed on us. And I thank you for our community here in Gilmore County. Lord, thank you for the people that are here and that you brought here. And we pray that tonight, as our school board makes decisions and as they continue serving our community and serving our students and parents, we thank you for the great education system we have. We thank you for all of your many blessings. And we just take time now, as they do these deliberations, to honor you as the living God, to thank you for loving us and through the Lord Jesus Christ welcoming us back into a relationship with you through faith in Him. We thank you for the freedom to worship you as we please in this nation, in the mighty name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
So I'll put the call in for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, consent to attend the items or listen, oh, I'm sorry, presentations and recognitions. Mr. Lloyd Mitchell, where are you? You have our Veterans Day poster and essay winners as well as our esports Rocket League team.
Yes, tonight we're excited to recognize these students. And in Charles Walker, Nicole Pike, Paul Ollie, and Matt Johnson will come up to present these to our students.
I am absolutely thrilled and proud of these three young ladies. They did an absolute fantastic job with our Veterans Day poster contest winners. Third grade, Lady Steinbruber. Fourth grade, Ms. Seth Garcia. And fifth grade, Maddie Jones, are you here? Did you make it?
We still have here, we can recognize the Lewisburg High School winners too. We had three essay contest winners. And then for sixth grade, Peyton Pedricks. Bailey Jazinski, seventh grade. And Tabitha Hunter, eighth grade. And they also read their speeches in our Veterans Day program. And for the high school, we have two essay winners. For 10th grade, Lucy White. And I'm here, Reagan Moore. Okay, if you'll look this way, I'll take a few pictures, then I'll get out of the way so the parents can. One, two, three. Do they have all the kids' picture rooms? Okay, thank you.
I'm also proud to recognize our esports Rocket League team. We recognized them in the spring for being state runner-ups. This year in the fall, they made it all the way to the final four before falling to a very difficult team with a number one ranked player in the country. I actually don't see anybody from my Rocket League team here.
They're home practicing. Go, Rachel.
Yeah, they must be preparing for the spring season. To that, a day off, a half a day for the students. But we are really proud of them and we'll make sure that they get acknowledged. Thank you all.
Okay. Under consent items, Mr. Chairman, consent item, agenda items are listed for board consideration for regular session on January 27th. Subject wish the board, we can add or move items from consent attended later as needed in preparation with that meeting. Consent items are minutes from 12:15 to 21 work executive session and 12:15 to 21 regular session. Out of state overnight field trips, which can find in folders, highlighted as the band trip and the rest of overnight trip to write by board folders. Under superintendent's report, first area following our strategic plan is academic achievement. This time I'll call Principal Carla Foley to the sand to tell us about Gilmore High School and CTA and all the wonderful places along.
For that to you this evening, we want to share and highlight what you've seen in the great leader happening at Gilmore High School in our college, our CTAE department, CTAE and the career technical ad education. And I think sometimes when we talk about CTAE, the vision that we get in our head is the old vocational tech programs. And it's very different than I think I was in high school when we had the post tech programs. And so I've asked each of our teachers of each of our programs to come and just present a couple minutes for each of you about some of the great things that are happening in their department. And so the first. Our first program that we're going to recognize tonight is our agriculture program. And we could probably spend most of the evening talking about our ag end to end program as they've been recognized often through the board, at the board meetings. And so a couple of things I just want to highlight, this evening presents. We have four pathways currently at Gilmore High School, our ag mechanics, animal science, or culture and poultry science. And we have about 300 students in our ag classes and FFA members through grades nine through 12. And our 2020, 2021 total, so this is for last school year. We had 118 students participating in FFA contests. And 89 of those were different students, so participating in all the different contests available to them. Thirty-seven of those students received gold emblems, which is the top one-third of the contest. And we also were gold ranking in our national champion application. And we've had seven state qualifying teams last year and two teams that went to nationals in October in Indianapolis. And our dairy evaluation team is in the top five in the country and our preliminary procedure team is in the top 12 in the country.
And if I can add, before the day that Octavia Bushy was selected as a spotlight student for 2022 Georgia Junior National Livestock Show Cavalry.
Thank you.
Six students in the nation have been selected.
Six students and she's one of the top 10. And as you know, we are in the process of developing our poultry research facility. And I spoke with Mr. Mike Bushy this afternoon and just got an update. We are in the design phase of our poultry research facility. And as soon as the design is finished, then we'll be ready to get started on the construction of that. And he will be here Thursday evening to give an update on our cannery. And he said he would happily answer any questions about the poultry research facility Thursday. And of course, you're all familiar with our agriculture education center, Howl's Dotted Creek. And we've hosted five livestock shows so far this year. And of course, we will have more once the spring competition season starts again. And we've got 13 dairy cattle on campus. We have 14 market hogs, four market lands, and three market goats that currently live between Gilmore High School and the Ag Education Center. And then, as you know, last year we planted 135 trees.
145.
135 trees at that orchard, and they are growing and doing well. And they are manned or taken care of by our students in the ag program, that's part of the nursery landscape program. We just have a couple of different pictures of quite the variety of things that our students are exposed to through our agriculture program. Up next is Coach Trey Rickman. And he is the teacher of our audio, video, tech, and film program.
Good evening. Like Ms. Ollie said, I'm Trey Rickman. I teach audio video program at the high school. And a couple of things that we do in the last year of taking this program over is that we've decided to spotlight what it is that our kids do at Gilmore High School and pop that out into our community. And I've actually gotten feedback from older siblings and grandparents that are living throughout the nation, being able to watch their grandkids or their younger siblings be able to participate. Some of the things that we've done. Is it working? A large majority of what we do is live streams because of what our kids do after hours with extra curriculars. But we've done things from graphics to coaching interviews to club interviews, program promos for things like CTAE and other programs throughout the school. We've also started doing senior spotlights this past fall with football. We do, we have a YouTube channel that's free to subscribe to. Please feel free to, there's the, if you go to YouTube and type in GHS ABT, once we get 1,000 subscribers, we can mobiley not have to set up all of our equipment. So if swimming, wanted to take an iPad with them and live stream a swimming event, they can take it, set it up and live stream once we have 1,000 subscribers. And then in the future, there's talks about video scoreboards, which has been approved and at the stadium and potentially at the gym, that is going to be an industry standard that's not middle level. It's going to be very similar to what you would see if you went and saw the Atlanta United or Atlanta Falcons play at Mercedes-Benz. That's going to be the same software that's going to integrate the new cameras that we've gotten in the last year. It's going to be high quality, high definition, what you see on your TV is supposedly what's going to be seen on the screens at those events, whether it's football, soccer, graduation, basketball, volleyball. We'll be able to do ad space and on the next screen. It's going to look very, very chaotic, but that's just a lot of the different things that we've done. Within the last year, we've probably livestreamed over 60 events and we've probably uploaded creative materials and interviews over 70. One of the things that our kids do enjoy doing is not just the concerts or the livestream events, but around Christmas or the holidays, they enjoy doing one of their holiday specials where they try to get the administrators to dance for them. But this past semester, our kids have actually started working on doing editing how-to videos to help out our lower levels. So they're trying to streamline everything down to our intro classes and to the kids that will phase out of our pathway into work-based learning that are working cohesively with ETC. This past year with COVID, we've actually had multiple of our kids run cameras for ETC on those nights because they've been shorthanded. And they've actually, and one of their cameramen is taking a job in Jacksonville, so they're actually one down when they do come here. So if you have any questions, email me, check out the YouTube channel. But that's basically it and just, thank you.
Our next program that we're going to highlight is our auto tech program. And Mr. Ken Martin, the teacher is up.
Currently, Ken Martin can teach auto tech, 14 years at Gilmore High School. We're turning out certified technicians right now. You see technicians like Ronnie Thompson Ford, local tire shops, tire shops in Paddon and Pickens County also. We have the local regional, of course, impact. We're literally have students working as far as, former students working as far as Texas, Florida, Georgia, and the local surrounding area. One of our students is the head mechanic at Gilmore EMS. Works on all the fire trucks and ambulance. I mean, good thing for him, there's a lot of responsibility. We're going to participate in four days program, which is all under curriculum. We're also by ASE entry level certification. Currently, we have a student that is, looks to be number one with the four days program, has completed all 108 Ford certifications. We're number one in the nation right now. We lead it by 7.5 students per certification per student. We have 137 active students. We've got 1,730, 1,733 course completion. So we do a mix of live work, online and shop instruction. With COVID, we had to start looking at what we do online and board team alongside of us and some other programs there too. This year, we started a power sport club. That's where we partnered up with NHRA, National Off-Road Association, drag racing. And we do a junior street drag racing program. So we're campaigning, 1984 S-Pen drag racing truck right now off campus, of course, with parent there. We have partnership with all the business, provide discounts to students, parents and staff. We have commercial accounts at several businesses and that goes down, not just my students and parents, it also impacts the staff at the school student. Here's a picture, the top left is Eric Duckey, he's the, one of the former students. He's also the manager of Ozon here. On top right, you see the drag racing truck, it's kind of getting, trying to get some traction there. Two individuals on the bottom is, they completed all ASE certification, entry level certification last year and all 11 of them. And then on the right is four of our current and past students, Ronnie Thompson Ford. Thank you.
Right, and up next is Mr. Dennis Wilson to talk about our construction.
Thank you. Currently at GHS, we offer four classes, including work-based learning, so that's an extra to go along with assessment, total of five. Right now, we have industrial fundamentals like professional safety. In this class, at the very beginning, they learn about the safety, the safety on the job, safety in the shop, learn how to use the tools of the trade and everything that goes with them. Currently, they are, the last two years, we have had OSHA 10 certification supplied to us through a grant, USAFCA. And all students are OSHA 10 certified as they come out of the program on that. Introduction to Construction is the second level in this class. They learn five different trades. They get a taste of them. HVAC, carpentry, electrical, masonry, and plumbing. Carpentry and electrical are the third courses. And you'll say carpentry, they learn to build a house from the ground up. That that's blueprint reading, foundation, walls, windows, doors, roof rafters, shingles, the whole night long. Electrical, right off the bat, just want to say congratulations to Logan Aaron, who plays first at Region One Skills, USA Residential Wiring Competition back in December. Congratulations to the other skills. USA people that I see here, they're doing great there too. In electrical, they learn about the very beginnings, residential wiring, NEC CO book, wiring 101, how to wire this up, how to wire that up, how to wire a house and troubleshoot. And of course, we now have on the first time work-based learning rotation, which is huge. Talk about that more here in a minute. Our class numbers for IFS, 82 students in three classes. That's this year, introduction to construction was 49 students in two classes. The carpentry now has 28 students in one class. And of course, work-based learning rotation has three students for a total of 159 students this year. We're going to start our construction site visitation. I'd like to say thank you to the Belle Frady and Kevin T for letting students come out and visit building sites this semester. All classes will visit the site and will be able to see firsthand the steps taken to build a house and be able to talk to the skilled tradesmen, or women, who make it all happen. As you can see in the top left-hand corner, that will be a site we will visit first. Hopefully it'll be Wednesday, depending on everything. We've been out there trying for two weeks to get out there. Mr. Kevin T of T Custom Homes is going to meet us out there, talk about what it takes from the ground up, just starting. Groundbreaking, it's going to be bi-weekly, getting the kids out there. And the other pictures are another house that's been framed up, ready to go. And you'll say, if you don't know about construction or building, you're waiting a long time for windows and doors. This is craziness, craziness. But that's just one of the houses that we might be able to get to, not sure yet. And of course, work-based learning. I'd like to say thank you to the construction community in partnering with GHS, Devell Frady Homes, planning and zoning, Mr. Hinson over there, Keith Dunn over at Appalachian Supply, Citizen Dupont Company, Pidus Electric, Modern Rustic Homes, Mr. Grant, and Associated Air for taking on these young men and women to get in and train them and get them into the fields they want to go, go into. Moses Bowman, I believe he's wanting to get into the electrician. Bryson Schubin Gibbs, he is still on that, talked to him Friday. He's still leaning, waiting to get that taste. And Mr. Marcus Alonso, he's wanting to go become a construction, I don't want to call him an architect, but manager, construction manager. So he's going to kick off about four years of college and come back and do his thing. If you have any questions, anything, like to come up and see the program in work in action, come on up, we're at the high school. Thank you.
And my brand newest programs that we have at the high school, it's in its second year, is culinary. And Ms. Rachel Walther is our culinary teacher.
Alright, mine's going to be a lot more brief, like Ms. Ollie said. This is only the second. You're going through this, so I don't have as much data to show with them. But I do wanted to highlight what we do within the pathway, so it's not just if you want to go in. I want to be a chef or a baker. We do highlight a lot more skills that these kids learn. And so what I like to get from them is not taking culinary, you learn a lot of life skills within it. So I just wanted to highlight, in the first introductory class, we go over a lot of safety and sanitation practices, diet skills, a lot of principles of nutrition within that class, equipment identification and table etiquette and settings. Kids really like the etiquette and settings. Got a lot of good feedback from it as well. And the culinary one, so this is the second level of this, we talk about some food service operations, commercial equipment, and some recipe conversions and purchasing, so we add a lot of math into that one as well. And then in the last class, we do culinary two, so we talk a lot of the hospitality tourism in the food industry, which relates back to some of our community needs that we've been addressing, as well as some regional ethnic and international cuisines that we prepare. And then conceptual food service operations within that. And then, once they finish all three of those levels, they will take the not too culinary certification. And this is a nationally accredited certification that they can take with them. And then, within that third level class, that one of the standards is community outreach. And so within this, we want to say thank you to some of their support. And so we are trying to get together in our third level class, making community lunches and selling them back to anyone that would like to come. And then we use that funding to be able to do more labs within the class. And then, a new thing that I'm trying to get up is community demonstrations. And so I've been in contact with five local restaurants and then two culinary technical schools around the area to try and create and provide a cooking demonstration or maybe with the technical schools, some of the lessons that they do in that class to kind of get more out from just what I can provide them. And so I've got a lot of good feedback and I've actually heard from three local restaurants and one technical college that wants to work with us and even to come into the classroom. I've heard a few people ask and then also just submitting that demonstration video, so that we can provide those kids with that as well.
But this is the, the kids' most favorite part of culinary is something they like to cook and make things. And our favorite part, students usually, they have to share those with their students. Our newest program, our newest CTAE program is our early childhood education program. And this is its inaugural year at the high school. It is replacing our teaching as a profession pathway. And Ms. Mary Ellen Peddell is the teacher.
I'm excited to be leading this program and excited about what's going to be going on with it. If you don't know much about early childhood education, it is very, very important and it has long-term effects. Children that receive strong early childhood education backgrounds, they're more likely to graduate from college, from high school. I mean, it's just little things like that that are huge. And so this is going to be a great program that is going to have long-term effects in our students, with our schools, and with our communities. Some of those long-term effects are that we'll be preparing students for careers, working with children, children from birth to 12 years of age in all sorts of different areas. We also, whenever they take these classes, it helps them become better parents because they know better how to raise their own children. It also makes them better family members and community members because they can speak into the things that children need. And for our community, we hope that this is going to get more of our Gilmore County students going to be teachers and coming right back to Gilmore County to teach, because we need them. We need them. The here and now benefits of this program are so exciting because as of February 3rd, we're going to start taking our second semester, there's three semesters in the program, second semester students to the pre-K and we're going to be able to observe and do some teaching there. And the kids are so excited about it. And one of the coolest things that we've got, and I'll show you this. This is some of our students last semester teaching at the pre-K. And they had such a great time, though they found the preschool was a little intimidating. They said they were very chunky. And so this, we do a lot of project-based learning. But this next slide shows you our pause for learning. With our L4GA grant, a couple, two or three years ago, Lottie. We were able to get an old school bus, obviously painted purple because you, we got to. And it is totally set up for a mobile preschool. And there's just so many ways this can be used. For this semester, we'll start taking it to the pre-K and it'll be used like one of our station rotations, so students can come in and out of using the bus and then being in the classrooms and all those kinds of things. And then next year, with our third semester students, we'll get to take it out into the, out into the community to meet the needs of children who aren't getting to take part in early childhood education. And so it's got a huge community impact as well. We're so excited about it. And I really want to thank Lottie Mitchell and Katrina Kingsley for all their help with this. Another thing that we're going to be doing this year, if you see people around the the community with these odd-looking babies, we have those simulator babies that we're going to be helping students understand what it takes to take care of an infant. So if they're crying in Walmart, the baby, not the kid, um, you'll know, you'll know what happened. Um, and then I think what's so cool about this program is you start off and you talk about all these long-term benefits and then it comes full circle because you invest in our children and our preschool children in our community. And then those children in turn go through the high school and they're more successful and they have a better chance of having a good career. And also it frees, and the more children we can get involved in early childhood education, the more time there is for parents to be able to work. And it frees parents up to contribute to our workforce too. So we are pumped. We're excited about the program and thank y'all.
Probably one of the longest-standing, uh, CTAE courses is our entrepreneurship, um, under our business education. And we have a new teacher this year for entrepreneurship class, Dr. Ben Pluck.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here. I think I was, um, started work two weeks after Dr. Lynn. So it's nice to be a part of the Gilmore group. Um, I am, as, uh, Ms. Foley indicated, I'm a business education teacher with a specialization in entrepreneurship. And it's kind of nice because I actually have some of my students here this evening. Um, in the entrepreneurship pathway, there are three courses. There's the introduction to business and technology course. There's the legal environment of business, which I like to call business law, but we don't because it gets confusing with criminal justice. And, uh, the third path, uh, the third course is actually the entrepreneurship course. And I believe very, very strongly that the fourth class in our pathway is work-based learning. As really following that philosophy, when I, in my coursework with all of my students, whether it be intro legal or entrepreneurship, I'm incorporating the Bobcat Brews, which is the school's, uh, coffee shop into the classroom. And I'm introducing it to the students and they begin doing internships or rotations in the coffee shop to help introduce them to the world of customer service and all of those employability skills that so many of our local companies are looking for in future employees. So students in introduction to business and technology focus on business concepts, technology and employability skills. And to say in legal environment, they focus on legal, they focus on technology, they focus on customer service and, uh, and employability skills. And in the last, um, group entrepreneurship, they do spend more time in the coffee shop. Um, currently we employ five work-based learning students in our program and we run the coffee shop from approximately seven AM until approximately one, what time is lunch go over there? One-ten, one-ten. Um, we'd love to be able to expand into the fourth hour of the school day. Um, we haven't quite found the product that works for that period of the day. Um, but we would like to expand that. The other thing that we are doing in, um, the business education program or in entrepreneurship program is, again, focusing on those employability skills. And we have a lot of conversation about strong communication, verbal and non-herbal teamwork, problem solving, being innovative, being willing to take risks and also about planning. Um, my kids are frequently in the cafeteria area, working on problem-solving skills and doing some fun and interesting things because to be real honest, the curriculum can get a little dry for them sometimes. And so to integrate these types of activities into the program makes it very meaningful to them. But I will say mostly they love working in the coffee shop. The coffee shop is up and running and we have coffee products, hot chocolate, hot tea. And at the request of students, we've actually started selling fruit drinks. Um, we had raspberry syrup. Somebody asked for raspberry water one day and the next thing we know, we have a new line called raspberry, or fruit water. We're trying to come up with a creative name. Any suggestions? The other thing is, is that in process right now is actually the opening of the Bobcat store. The Bobcat store will be located directly across from the coffee shop in the media center. Um, we will be selling anything and everything. Well, okay, not everything and everything. We're selling a lot of Bobcat stuff. So, um, using our, uh, Bobcat pride, we want to be both a presence in the building as well as an online presence. Um, we have orders that have already been coming in and the next thing we need to do is get the remodeling done and the Bobcat shop will be up and running. If you have any questions, any concerns, any suggestions, please send them our way. Thank you.
So about four years ago, I'm our school resource officer, I'm brought to my attention that he, um, was interested in doing a mock trial club during our club time at the high school. And so he started during the club time, had a few students who were interested in mock trial. And he really enjoyed working with them and teaching them and came to me one day and said, you know, there's this public safety pathway through CTAE, um, that I think I'm qualified to teach if that would be, there would be an opportunity for that. And so, um, we checked into that and found out it was definitely something that would serve a need within our community. And we had enough students who had participated that wanted to participate in something like that. And so we started our public safety program. And he is not, no longer with us, but, uh, we have a very teacher, Chris Martinez, who is our public safety criminal justice investigations teacher. Um, he is not with us. He's home, uh, safely quarantining. Uh, so, uh, Corningate, our CTAE director, can you talk a little bit about the public safety?
Trying to do Mr. Martinez justice here. Um, pretend I know the law. I know the law, I'm just kidding. All right. Um, so within the public safety cluster, we are currently focused on criminal investigation pathway. Uh, those are the three classes and the skills that they, they work on in each class. It's really neat to see them out in the parking lot, looking at tire tread and measuring to see where the perpetrator went. And, uh, you know, seeing match equations and everything, it's great. They're disciplined there. Uh, but right now, the pathway is criminal investigations. What we hope to start doing is similar to what we were, have been doing in construction where every other year we rotate between the third level course and construction is carpentry and electrical. We all alter them each year. Uh, what we want to do in criminal investigations is do criminal investigations one year and then, uh, corrections the next year. Because if they take the corrections pathway, that would qualify them to work, uh, as jailers right away. And that, that's a huge need in this area. It's, uh, and it's like, it's a, it's a, it's a good job, um, good starting, hey, the kids straight out of high school, that's what we want to do. Uh, here are some pictures of, uh, what they're doing. That, the dummy on the ground right there, I, I frequently find him in, uh, he, he, he sneaks around. He's surprised. He's a character. But, uh, they're always outside doing, they're really doing hands-on things. And it's, uh, it's really neat to see them doing that. Mr. Martinez is also over Skills USA. He's the sponsor for the CTSO, it's a criminal tax due organization. Uh, over the last several years, even with COVID, he has really worked to, uh, to build the numbers and skills. We currently have, I want to say around fifty students, four to fifty students. Um, and that is, that's the most we've had in a while. So this continues to be a, uh, a program next to FFA. It's our second biggest CTSO and it's continued to grow. We're excited about that. Recently in December, um, we're doing a contest in Region One, Logan Aaron, who's not here, finished first in electrical construction wiring, as Mr. Wilson mentioned. Uh, Taylor Cormick, who is here, was finished in second place. And December Rain is speaking. Uh, Brooklyn Lamack finished in second place for first day CPR. And then Natalie McMurtry is also here and, uh, she finished in third place in prepared speech. So congrats to them. And I'll hand it off to Ms. Rutter.
All right. I am the color Rutter. I'm the work-based learning coordinator here. Uh, this is my third year in this role. So if you do the math, I started in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So knock on wood as I say it, this has been my first normal school year where we're back working with some healthcare partners and things like that. Um, it's apropos that I am last, even though I think it was just alphabetical order because I do encourage everybody to treat this like the third level of their pathway. Um, there's tremendous value to getting those experiences in the classroom. However, taking them out into the community and applying those skills in a practical manner can often really hammer home for our students, whether it's really what they want to do with their future before they make that investment in college, trade school, et cetera. Um, along with the actual work that they do in our community, which probably everybody in this room, maybe without even knowing it, has been at some point in your life served or helped by a work-based learning student. They are everywhere, lurking in the shadows of every business you frequent. Um, and along with that, within the classroom, we do some career-related reflections. Um, we work on their resumes, cover letters, um, proper business communication, et cetera, just so that by the time they leave our programs, they can have both those practical, technical skills as well as the soft skills, employability skills they need to go in whatever, whatever direction they should choose. Um, we do try to choose meaningful, career-related internships. So these are not usually the students that are working fast food. They're in law offices, doctor's offices. They are in both of our funeral homes and there's a lot of them here tonight. So, um, they're, like I said, they're everywhere, but we do try to choose things that really could be a profitable, money-making career that, um, requires a little bit more technical skills and training. We currently have, just this semester, this isn't all time, but we have thirty business partners plus all five of the, um, Gilmore County schools and all of our school-based enterprises. So you've heard about some of those tonight from the Ag Center poultry, um, poultry science facility to our coffee shop, to our school store. Um, Bobcat Productions has taken two interns this year. So we do, um, try to serve our internal programs as well as serving the community. Uh, we have currently sixty-seven placements and these students, if they complete two semesters which with me, which I encourage them all to do, or looking at you guys who are just juniors this year, um, they can earn their Georgia Best, which is a certificate recognized by the Department of Labor that actually can help them, uh, drive their careers forward. They can also, um, for what we offer in our school, since we don't have like ROTC, the only way our students can earn their distinguished pathway skills, um, diploma seal and their distinguished employability skills diploma seals is through adding that work-based learning as well as of course, things like being involved in their CTSO and completing a pathway and in a pathway exam. So we want to send it out into the world with some actual stuff on paper that they can get jobs with. These are a few pictures. Like I said, they're everywhere. Um, we have Ace, Bradley Ace Hardware. Um, the second photo is from the Nuclear Creek Elementary School, Aspen Den, Blue Ridge, Bernhardt Funeral Home. Bottom left is Dr. Wen Urgent Care. The middle there is Parkside and the far right is Artwork Salon. And as you can see in a lot of these, um, they're not standing or observing. They are incredibly involved in the processes of the places that they work. So, yeah, that's me.
All right. So we are incredibly excited to announce, uh, what we're about to talk about here. Um, it came together very quickly in a partnership with the University of North Georgia and the Joint Development Authority of, uh, Grayor Gilmore. Uh, most other districts have some sort of student leadership program. A lot of them are run through Chamber, through the local Chamber of Commerce. Most of the surrounding school districts around us have, uh, have a, uh, program like that. We did not have that. Uh, the University of North Georgia, um, it's, the University of North Georgia received a grant last year, a federal grant to address developing entrepreneurial and leadership skills in rural areas. So we met for the better part of a year, uh, Mr. Kent Sanford, the Joint Development, uh, Executive Director, myself, representatives from UNG and also Mrs. Robert back there. She was part of the team too. Uh, we met for a long time to discuss what the best, what the best way to use this grant money was and, and how to create, um, something meaningful. And we went back and forth many, many times. Uh, what we finally decided on though is a new program that we're calling Lead Gilmore. Uh, the kickoff was supposed to be last week, but because of, uh, the schools being closed last Wednesday, it's been postponed to this Wednesday. Uh, the students in the front row, uh, in the front row right here are, are inaugural class. Um, and it's going to be very exciting because the goal is to develop leadership and entrepreneurial skills in our students, uh, to be nominated or to be, to be considered. A CTA teacher, specifically a CTSO sponsor had to recommend you, uh, the vast majority of the, all of these students are at the top of their class, um, academically, but they're also, they were, they came from CTAE. So it really is a CTAE program. Um, they also had to be eleventh grade and then they had to fill out an application and then they, UNG came out, they had, they sent a representative and, uh, Mr. Kent Sanford, myself, Ms. Rutter, we all sat for the better part of two days, interviewed all of these students. They did a great job and we ended up settling on, uh, seventeen, seventeen in the inaugural class. But the ultimate goal, and many of them are very excited about this, is we've had many conversations about, there's so many students who graduate in Gilmore County and go to college and they'll come back. And, and I don't think that's any secret. I mean, the data shows that. Uh, we talked about that as a group. And, uh, like Mr. Burton, Mr. Chastain, they are passionate about, uh, staying in Gilmore and, and, and just doing whatever they can to help. So it's going to be a really exciting program. We're excited to be able to develop these local leaders and hopefully keep them around. Uh, and so this is the inaugural class. Let me just say one thing real quick. The way it's going to work is each month, there's going to be a half-day of onsite, like, uh, workplace tours. So for instance, uh, one of the months, I think February, it would be agro-tourism that will be the focus. We'll meet with the Chamber for the first half of the day and we'll kind of give the macro view of how agro-tourism affects the, affects the county, uh, economically. And then we were going to go to RNA and have Andy Futch give us a tour behind the scenes and how it affects like one specific farm. Because we all know that agro-tourism is a big thing. Every time I drive down five fifteen, I see a new green sign. But, uh, but they're going to get to experience it. They're going to get to see what goes into it. And, uh, and each month we're going to have a different focus. We're very, very excited about it. The kickoff is Wednesday morning, uh, and, and we're, we're very excited. Uh, so when I call your name, stand up. If we can get a picture, somebody can take a picture. This boy, you're the best. All right. Leslie Benitez. Matthew Chastain. Stephanie is not here. Ian Hagerty. Lani Hensley. Now we couldn't be here either, nor could Jack, nor could Camden. Uh, a lot of students work in the afternoon, except for in the evening. Anna Martinez Valderas. Taylor Cormick. Marilyn McMurtry. Emily Mosley. Cassidy Princhen. And Madison Stanley. And I can't imagine if I could not be here. But this is the inaugural Lead Gilmore class. We hope to do this every year. Um, and we're very excited with all the partners that we have and with this fine group of students. So you'll be hearing more about this in the near future. But thank you, guys.
Did all the parents get it?
I think we're out in a little bit more than our normal amount of time. Um, there's a couple things that I need to say to the students in the classroom. Uh, one, we are very passionate in terms of being with students, uh, very valuable high schools. And we have a variety of opportunities for our students.
Oh, we got some.
There's a bright, right in there.
We can help you. We have one out at Park School.
All right. Moving on to character, we need to engage with some reorganization. The gentleman state reorganization office has contacted us about rebalancing our board districts. The maps provided for review outlined in two thousand and twelve in the green lines with proposed changes in the colored areas. As you can see, there are three proposed changes that are intended to even out the districts. I think they had it clear down to the, to each district. Uh, if you look up here at the top, and I hobbied out a few of your, here, our projector right about ten minutes ago, but District Five, this green line is the two thousand and twelve line. District Five approaches over into District Four here. District Two encroaches over this green line down Yukon Road and then over Clear Creek and out of the county. And then right here in this area, it's hard to see because it's all green. This green line here is the old District Four. This new area is a pretty highly populated area that they've taken over to, uh, increase the donors in District Four. that they've taken over to increase the voters in District 4. The original problem was that there were not enough people in 5, and too many on 1. And what I expected them to do was bring a line down here a little bit. But I can see what they tried to do is make sure that all of LJ, East LJ city limits are still included within District 1. And you'll note there are door addresses. So they did not cut any of you out of the board districts. You will also note, these dotted lines are the voting districts. So if you live within this area, you vote at the same location. So as you know, the only thing that this affects is where future board members may live within a district. Since all of you are voted on at large, it really doesn't have any effect on who votes who. Is the second map up there? This map is a little hard to read because it's got all the streets on it. But I've been told, because I'm kind of new to Gilmore County, I've been told that this green line kind of goes down the ridge of a mountain. And so all the people on this side would be on one side of the mountain, and people on this side.
I was talking with College 52.
I'm not sure, y'all, y'all don't know that either, but.
Howie, what?
I have not been talking.
I think yes.
So this is, this is the old one. And it kind of stops here and cuts into this area. It's not as heavily populated as the area that. I don't know if it's on District 3, or District 4. Yeah, it's not as populated as this, as you can see. It's.
What if they do, like this little piece right here? Why leave that steep way out like that? Right here, with my point, it's going straight here. I'm not sure.
Probably, probably just there don't appear to be enough people. They're late, I mean, but there are nobody there. I don't realize that. That's that road, Dr. Mop's house, the road goes coming into 515 now. And you got, you got no, it's a field, houses are. Clear the lines up, it looks like they're stretching out a little bit.
The same thing, that little piece getting out around Mount Mop right there. I get what this has to go right there.
Here.
What's that? I mean, what's that doing there?
Well, he's put that in yellow. Is there anybody?
Are these maps we're viewing right now, do they come from the state?
They came from the State Re分成office.
So they rebrewed the map, of course.
They rebrewed the map. They have the.
There's no local input on this at all so far?
No.
Okay.
The only, Patty Watkins has a copy. Yes, I sent it to her. Other than that, they, the seating, they've had no input at all. They didn't go over, didn't they? There's a lot of them.
Why did they? Black Creek Road, that's the.
Hello there?
Yeah, it says Black Creek Road right there above it. Where it comes out through there and that Pete order lane, oh. Can't remember where that's at.
Well, I don't mind, because I think that's where the street shops go. Curved, drop by his house. We have things on edge anywhere there. It's like that road. They cut away, I'll get some green houses. Agrees, I can see where they have them. That's up the other, because when we go on executive session, we can talk about our legal options, about what our options are. But I want y'all to be able to see this and ask questions. And maybe we can blow it up a bit, so.
Can you tell from yours is coming through there? There, that's not the other step part.
Right.
Mr. Flunder, right there with the green.
Oh, right here.
Coming up through there.
Scoot it up a little bit.
As for dogs.
Yeah, this goes down Yukon Road. It goes all the Clear Creek area. And it continues now. Well, I think a bunch of development boards, according to Yukon, right inside, are currently placing. Is he putting a big belt on one of them?
They got approved.
There may be.
It's been approved, there's just, they're cutting roads in and all that stuff.
But this is all based on census. So nobody was living there when they did the census in our county. So really, it's back to. Blue Room. District, or anybody. Yes, as far as landmass, really.
It makes it a little bigger, but I got more, I got, I got a hood of trees around. I got more.
There's really more, there's really more people in the area that was primarily poor, as they.
That's where that used to be.
So we often consider this, we can talk about our legal options in the executive session. Basically, we have the opportunity to accept the map as presented from the State Re分成office. We can alter it ourselves, ask for some changes. Those are within our authority. But that's, if y'all have any other questions about it while we got it up here.
You know when the last time this was?
2012. And because they're having some question about when this was last done. So you're going to have just a hair in, just down the bottom of the previous map. See, just a little bit here. Just looking in the legend, those green lines, that's the 2012 census lines. So apparently, they did it in 2012, which lines up with us, you know, two years after the census. So this is something regularly done. It would be kind of unusual had it been done some other time over the last 10 years. So I don't know if there's been some discussion about that in previous years, but it wasn't actually changed.
Well, we're one of the few, well, maybe the only county in Georgia does it this way. Or eight board members got to run all that district, but the whole county is below. Well, it usually does.
It's still wide.
Like the white county, they do, but the chairman runs countywide. He's like four years chairman, got four districts. You run any district, all the people in the district, that's all. So it's, it counts. And we don't, we run down parks, so I think that makes a difference, too.
And this doesn't affect any other local election, although it's only us. So I don't, I can't sleep right either.
It has, you can do the district numbers, it's actually just a number here, right?
Right.
Just roll down, boy, the next, the next page.
I don't know if I included this in the board email, because I thought, you know, the questions about it. If you look here, they evened out the population as it stood on the census to these areas, these numbers in each district. So a deviation of less than 100 in each district.
That's the population.
It was on census, though.
31,000.
Well, that may be different.
Census total.
So that's, that's what they said. It seemed like a moral sad. That's what I'm, but, you know, these are, when it comes down to it, this, these two numbers are down there.
Really all it does is, it can add somebody, it can run the new district, or much of the way out, run the new district, so.
But ultimately, it's still one. So we can, we can discuss that further. Okay, next area, strategic plan, will be high performance culture and workforce. Under that, Mr. Chairman, we'll discuss higher ramped up actions and compensation. Later in executive session, we can add personnel agenda in folders. Administrative renewal, administrative renewals for the 2022, 2023 school year are included in the packet. This includes district office directors and principals. And I can answer any questions to that end of executive session. And that'll be on the Thursday agenda, pending any changes we want to make. Next, under operational effectiveness, we have board chair and vice chair. So on Thursday's agenda, we'll select the board chair and vice chair from the coming year, unless you make the process on Thursday, and ask for nominations from the board. Next, we have gym scoreboard update. Mr. Barry is going to provide some updated information. We found out today that we won't have an engineering back until the end of the week. We want to provide you with an update and tell you where we're at in preparation for that. Great, thanks.
Good evening, board. Happy New Year, too. I haven't seen you since the last board meeting. I did want to just circle back real quick on the stadium. I want to just give you a quick update on that. The contract was signed. We also ensured that we have a performance bond in place from the provider, additional layer protection for us, so I wanted to update you on that. We also have had several meetings since the last board meeting. These have all been preliminary, preliminary meetings to, rolling into this coming Thursday, when the scoreboard manufacturer is going to come back out and provide us hard dates. We have a tentative scheduled. We do have both the stadium, as well as a tentative scheduled for the gym, pending board approval and other things that have to happen. So I want to go over that with you right now. We had a meeting back on December 15th. We met with engineers. One of the things that we had to do, the engineer that constructed our gymnasium has passed away since that gym was built. And getting an engineering firm to sign off on somebody else's strongs has been quite the challenge. We did locate an engineer through one of our local builders who was willing to work with us. And Dr. Riddler was actually at that meeting as well, along with Bob Sosseby and others we met with, that they did not seem to think there would be a problem with the engineering and being able to put a B-home double scoreboard in the gym. So on January 3rd, one of the things that we did is we created a Google Classroom. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, this is really just a digital classroom in which we had all of our coaches, as well as activity sponsors, join and required to be members of that, so they can get that information on a regular basis. It'll also kick out automatic emails whenever we post updates to meetings, activities, calendars, et cetera. So we really want to make sure that everybody's involved in that. On January 4th, we had a required meeting for all coaches and sponsors, both at the middle school and high school level, where we reviewed expectations. We were insured that all were members of that classroom. And we were going to assess, we did a follow-up email today. I think there's only seven that have not joined today or haven't accepted that. And so Matt Johnson's going to need to reach out and making sure that they are part of that. We really want to make sure they're getting the information by doing so. Just want to ensure they get that information. On January 11th, we received and signed the engagement agreement with Innovation Design, which is the engineering firm, to provide low calculations to the gymnasiums that we can move forward. We haven't started really any design, other than just conceptual at this point. On January 20th, we had a gym scoreboard review discussion called it the High School. 22 invites were sent out, six replied, with 11 in attendance. I just want to recognize 11 in attendance. We had them all sign in. We want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to contribute. Matt Johnson, Carla Foley, Jordan Heiss, Donna Park, Susan Dunn, Ashley Waters, Jessica Henleys, David Weavers, Trey Rickman, Simon Phipps, and Call Standard, myself. I want to special thank you to all those folks who actually came to work super early, went out there to the high school at 6:45, and make sure that we, that it was attended and making sure that I could meet with the teachers and the coaches that were involved. January 20th, you received an update. I hadn't heard background yet today. We were expecting to hear this week. So I followed up this morning and got a written confirmation back that we will have or expect to have those low calculations by Friday. So we'll be able to provide an update to you for those. We also have tentatively scheduled an install pending other items. And the reason why we did that, we want to make sure that we're hitting those dead weeks. We want to be able to pencil those in and reserve the installation companies to work on our timeline, not theirs. So that's all tentative, can be changed and edited, but we didn't want to lose out on that. And we also have our gym resourcing that's going to happen after the install that we move forward with that project, pending board approval. And then we have also sent a follow-up email to all the coaches. All of this information is contained within, like I said, within the classroom. We can, it's in our, really, it's more of an archive for our, for our record, but also to make sure, as I said, that everybody is getting that information.
And one of the discussion lines has been the specific shade of purple. So Barry is going to provide some information to the five of you, so that y'all can weigh in on that shade of purple as well.
Because what I've learned is that there's really no color that anybody can tell me is colored. Yellow, purple, but everybody recognizes it when they see it. So we have gone to the scoreboard design. No, it's going to be more, it's going to be more approved purple.
That's actually a good thing. They'll have that panel.
Yeah, so I'll make sure I include that as part of it. But we just want to make sure that we did the right one.
I want to know where it comes, and Coach Scudder told me where it came from.
Well.
Several years ago.
And just, like, what I've learned is basketball, the basketball team uses Nike purple, the football team uses Adidas purple and others, so depending on what they're ordering. So they're all right in the same family in shades, but we'll make sure we bring that to you, so you can see. Any questions? Great, thank you so much.
All right, under policies, these policies are current policies that are part of our consistent revision process. They will be posted on the GCSS website for public review and comment before the second reading at the board's meeting and board session next month. Subject to feedback and public deliberations, these will be voted upon at the regular session next month. First read policies are Policy AFC, where it's a closings, Policy CMK, administrative rules, Policy DFK, gifts and requests, and Policy GCRA1, drug screening of bus drivers. Our second read policies have been posted on our district website since our work session last month and submitted to GSBA Legal Council for review. We have received no public feedback or recommendations from GSBA Legal Council. Policies, or second review, or second read are Policy JDCCA, student assignments to schools, Policy IDFA, gender equity in sports, Policy IEVA, low structured break time, Policy IFDC, media programs, and Policy IFDG, internet acceptable use. Do you have any questions about any of the changes, or proposed changes in these policies? And I'll look them, these policies will be further called Thursday. All right, next area following our strategic plan is fiscal accountability. Mr. Park, would you please come forward and give us your student version report?
Hello, how are y'all this evening?
She sent her report in the suburb short.
Super short. Super, super. For the most part, November was a great month. Our revenues were over the expenditures by 251,293. So that was a great month. Especially with the, the prices, the increase in prices. We seem to manage with our participation. We seem to kind of manage and hang in there, so everything looks well with us. We're still working on our participation, but for the most part, we're doing well with it. So we don't have anything else to, unless y'all have any questions.
I mean, when it's free, how can you go a hundred percent?
We're working on it.
Come on, I've never. I mean, it's free.
And you know, I'm in the schools a lot, and I'm talking to the kids. And, and you know, I just think that, you know, the more we work with them, and I've got, I'm telling you, I've got support from the, from all entities of the school system. And I think it's just going to be some coaching. But I mean, for the most part, we're doing a phenomenal job. I'm just so pleased with the staff.
Yeah, opposite end, we got him.
Okay, in gym. Um, okay, in general, for the month of December, all over the system, we've got 74% for lunch.
So rest on bragging lunch?
I don't understand it.
Is this picky or Peter?
Well, and we're actually, you know, I'm, I'm now safe to the menu, and I'm saying, okay, we've got a high participation on this day. What did we serve? We served pizza, they love pizza, the highest, you know, highest participation. So we're really catering to the taste of each school, and we don't do it across the board. We're really looking at the elementary schools, we're looking at the high school and the middle school. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to shout out to all of them, because they've been an amazing... This, this group right here is just absolutely amazing. For our high school, our high school that can go and get breakfast wherever, we've got this particular, in the month of December, now, the month of December, we had Christmas. We had Christmas parties, we had late nights, we had a lot to interfere with your breakfast. But you've got 42%, which is low, lower than the month before. The month before, we had 49%. Our mag group, this Fannin, Pickens, Luckton Dawson, they're looking at me like, how are you doing it? How are you really doing this? And, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's just abiding from everybody.
To put it in perspective, that's, that's a relatively high number for a...
It's very high, because they, they don't even touch that. And of course, that's the lowest one, but I mean, our elementary schools are... So, you know, we're just, just working with the children.
And I will, I will, this part says, participation rate is one of the metrics that we measure every month. And she's worked very hard with our principals and been very cooperative to get that participation up, because that's money. That fuels the program.
And if I can do a shout out to the middle school, we doubled in one month, pretty much. Because, I mean, and it was just an effort from everybody. You know, this is where we are, can we get here? And we got there in less than a month. So, you know, just, we're just working and we'll get there.
Okay, so those people are so fixified.
Yeah. Yeah.
Under budget update, Mr. Perry, we present our budget update. Mr. Perry, you had a busy day today?
Oh, yes.
You have auditors?
We had auditors today, and we're very enjoyed.
You got to show them where we...
Yeah, we talked a lot today. So for your reports tonight, first of all, we have our purchasing policy expenditures. These are noted just for disclosure purposes only. There's nothing on here for approval or anything that required approval. Next, we have our financial report for November. That's five months or 41.66% of the year complete. Our total revenues for the year-to-date period, 18 million, oh, eighty-six. And our local tax revenues was 8 million, 828,000, and that's 47.65%. If you look back and compare that to last year, at the same time, our collections were only 4.7 million for our property taxes. So when you're looking at our fund balance, you know, about 4 million of that is an increase. So people paid the property taxes earlier this year.
I didn't get a bill.
Maybe you weren't one that was paying earlier.
Still, I got a bill.
Really?
That mean I'll have to pay it?
Well, you know, I can't speak for that. I doubt that will be the case.
No, I didn't pay it.
Our total expenditures for the year-to-date period were 16 million, 931,000. So that puts us in a position, at the end of November, we had excess revenues greater than our expenditures of 1.1 million. Our fund balance at the end of November was 22 million, 253,000. Next, we have our East Loss. So in our 2015 East Loss expenditures, our total for the project is 18 million, 866,000. And for the month, we had 15 million, 608, I'm sorry, 15,608 dollars. 12,000 of that was technology and 3,000 was HVAC controls. For our 2020 East Loss, we have a total of 17 million, 348,000, and we didn't have any for the month. Our East Loss revenue for the month of October was 677,265 dollars. That was 38,322 dollars more than, I'm sorry, this was for November. For, it was 3, 38,322 dollars more than the month of October, 6% increase. And the change from last year was 132,092 dollars, a 24% increase over last year. So we have collected for the period, our average is 593,000 per month for the 2020 East Loss period, just 14 months.
Well, how quickly will this end then?
Well, continuing at this rate, you know, it could be a year short, but we have no idea what's going to happen. But so far, you know, every month I report, we have increased. One month, maybe we've had a decrease, but it's been very rare. You all have any questions?
Everything going all right with the audit so far?
So far, everything's going good. We have a new group in the audit world. You can only have the same audit team for so many years before they have to rotate off. This was our year to get a new group. Typically, we're reviewed out of the Calhoun office, but they've had shortages and everything. So our group this year is out of the Atlanta office. Most of the Department of Audits is still working a lot remotely, as they are here in the office. One of the members that was supposed to be here, we found out he tested positive for COVID, so we're a little short, so.
Well, that little fellow runner, that seems very knowledgeable.
Yes, he is very knowledgeable.
He went to Breeden High School, but he still ought to be in the...
Yes.
Yeah, that's the city school.
That's the city school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, our superintendent, we had fraud interviews today, and our board chairman got to participate, too.
We both passed, I guess.
Did y'all pass? Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Trey. All right, under announcements and comments, I'd like to congratulate the GHS wrestling team. They follow our battle and set the state duels championships. We're proud of everything that accomplished this year and wish them all the best at the state traditional championships coming up in May. Under public participation, according to policy VCD dash part of one, and as a final agenda item in all board work sessions, it will be intended for the board to allow inputs solely on agenda items and those in attendance. All presentations to board are to be read and intended for the board to hear comments or concerns without date match. All other time limits and topic restrictions, restrictions remain in effect. Is there anyone here for public participation? Okay. Mr. Chairman, it's time to write in on the board. Going to executive session, session to discuss personnel litigation and real estate. No action, we think, following the executive session.
Have a motion during the executive session.
Can I make a motion?
Second. All aboard?
All aboard.